The meeting is now being recorded.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. It is 11:28. We are obviously running a bit behind in our day two of our regular May board meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees. I'm going to call us to order in a second so that the secretary can take a role. Before I do that, let me just say thank you very much for your patience. We know that this morning's agenda has quite a few important issues on it, and we're looking forward to getting business started, so let's do that. Madam Secretary, if you take the role, I'd appreciate it.
Ratin?
President.
Chen?
Here.
Cisneros?
Here.
De La Cruz? Delen? Duran?
Here.
Lag?
Oh, did you say Suleg?
Yes, Suleg.
I'm here.
Thank you. Shelby?
Present.
So?
Present.
Stallings?
Here.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I understand that there may be some technical difficulties with the video in one of our offices, so if you're going to, I see three Sean Sulegs, which is a nice thing, but Mr. Suleg is only participating as one board member today.
Do I get three votes? How exciting.
You do not. I try to. I will start by just letting folks know that we have the following remaining items on our agenda from yesterday. Item 701 is the Proposed Amendments to the Finals California Paraprofessionals Program Working Group Recommendations and Rules, which we will start with momentarily. And item 710 is the SB 211 Case Processing Standards Update Presentation, which we'll take up after the paraprofessional item. After that, the board will convene into closed session to consider the items, and I'll make the announcement at the appropriate time. As we get started, however, since we're starting a new day, I do want to open up the floor to public comment on any of the items on our agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees. I see that we have a couple of hands raised already. For those of you who are familiar with Zoom, you'll recognize the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen. If you're joining us by telephone only, you raise your hand by pressing star nine, star six, star nine. Star six is mute and unmute. And of course, the board is always encourages and welcomes public comment and input on our items. I see that the attendees list is populating with raised hands, and so please feel free to do so as folks are speaking, and I will hand the floor over to the secretary to start the public comment, unless any member of the board has questions, comments, or concerns before we start. Okay, seeing none, Madam Secretary.
First, we have Stephen Fleishman. Stephen, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Steve Fleishman. I'm a partner at Horvitz and Levy in LA. I was a member of the Paraprofessional Working Group. I'd like to comment on the financial aspects of the proposal. As the board knows, there was a similar program in Washington, which was canceled after five years at a cost of $1.4 million. The State Bar now estimates that getting this program up and running will cost $2 million. On pages 28 and 29 of the Adels Report, the State Bar recommended considering taking donations from the Gates Foundation, Google.org, and the Zuckerberg Initiative in order to pay the startup costs for the paraprofessional program. Obviously, there's great concern among members of the bar about the impact of technology on the practice of law, particularly as it relates to the ongoing sandbox group. I feel it would be highly inappropriate to take money from technology companies while at the same time trying to let technology companies practice law in California. I believe the only way this program should go forward is if the funding is decided in advance through funding from the legislature. There have been discussions about taking a $2 million loan from the general fund in order to fund this. However, you need to know how many people would need to sign up for the program to make the program sustainable and to pay back the $2 million, which of course could also be used for enforcement purposes. So I'd ask the board not to adopt this program until the financial aspects are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman.
Next, we have Jackie Serna. Jackie, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and State Bar Board of Trustees Members. I'm Jacqueline Serna, the Deputy Legislative Director for the Consumer Attorneys of California. We submitted a written comment earlier this week with regard to this item, but I would like to briefly highlight just a few issues. We strongly support the revised dissents by the paraprofessional group members Carolyn Shining and Steve Fleishman. So we would direct you to those points made in their excellent dissents. Secondly, we urge the Board of Trustees to consider two very important public comments that were submitted during the public comment period before taking any final action on these recommendations. The first being the letter from Attorney General Rob Bonta dated January 12, 2022, and the second being the letter from the 24 legal aid organizations, including public counsel Betzettic and others dated January 7, where they explained their opposition to the program as a whole from a consumer legal perspective. We very much support the points made in those public comments. Like Mr. Fleishman, we are gravely concerned with the funding source still not being identified almost two years into this endeavor, and we would actually urge that any funding come from the state legislature to ensure that there's integrity in auditing of it and oversight by the public, by the legislature as it should be. And finally, we think that this program is not ready to be enacted. It's not ready to go, and there needs to be further opportunity for public comment if any changes are made before this proposal is presented to the Supreme Court and to the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serna.
Next, we have Ken Wang. Ken, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and State Bar Trustee Members. My name is Ken Wang, and I'm the Policy Associate for the California Employment Lawyers Association. I'm commenting on item 701. Cila is a statewide organization of over 1,200 attorneys who practice primarily employment law on behalf of workers, and we just want to align our comments with those of Jackie Serna and of Steve Fleishman. And we want to strongly urge you to consider the revised dissents of Member Shining and Fleishman and urge you to take seriously the concerns that they, along with the letters from the Attorney General Rob Bonta, as well as the 24 legal aid organizations, have raised. While we commend the working group for rejecting non-lawyer ownership of law firms after extensive public comments opposing the proposal, the State Bar staff have made references to possible further changes before implementation of the program. Such changes should not be done without further public input and without this measure of transparency and accountability. We cannot support the Board of Trustees taking a vote on a report and recommendation that are not truly final. And finally, just a point on the funding source. We're really deeply concerned about the possible conflicts of interest arising from public-private funding for a state bar-run initiative. It's not a secret that these private tech-based funding sources that have been mentioned have an interest in advancing its own profit motive through the provision of legal services in a regulatory sandbox in consideration by the State Bar. And the legislature should be the only funding source for this program and any similar state bar endeavors. That's the only way to ensure appropriate oversight, auditing, and public accountability. Thank you for considering these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Wang.
Next, we have Leigh Farren. Leigh, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Leigh Farren. I'm the Director of Legal Services at Public Law Center in Orange County. I am reporting on the Paraprofessionals Working Group. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I thought I heard someone else talking. Sorry about that. I have followed the discussion of the proposal after receipt of the public comment, and I believe that the representation of the public comments received is skewed. For instance, the summary listed a number of groups labeled as consumer advocacy groups as in favor of the proposal. I would argue that many, if not all, of the legal services organizations that commented are also consumer advocacy groups. As a legal services attorney, when I speak publicly, my role is to speak on behalf of my clients, not me personally. Ultimately, though, I think the overall issue is that there are still a number of concerns with the proposal, even as amended. First, we believe the paraprofessional proposal is not necessarily the answer to the justice gap. The studies, more than anything else, show that there's an education gap that Californians do not know when they have a legal problem. There's insufficient data to confirm that the appropriate solution is creating an entirely new licensee rather than countless other alternative solutions that were never really considered or studied as possibilities. Some of those are community navigator programs, a program patterned off the provisionally licensed lawyer program or broad right to counsel advocacy. Beyond the threshold issue, we don't believe the paraprofessional proposal is an appropriate solution to solving the justice gap. We believe there are other flaws. We believe attorney supervision should be required. We believe paraprofessionals should not be able to appear in court except for one under attorney supervision. And we believe that some of the subject matters approved for inclusion in the program are inappropriate and that there will be unintended consequences, including particularly issues of clients feeling forced to waive federal claims or not understanding the availability of other possible relief because of the limitations of the paraprofessionals. The letter submitted by the group of legal services organizations, of which my organization was a part, goes into much more detail, and I won't continue on with that as I'm assuming you all were able to review the public comments. We recognize the incredible amount of time and energy that the working group has put in, and I appreciate all of that. There was extensive conversations and meetings, I know, but we're concerned that the entire proposal is premised on an incorrect conclusion based on incomplete data. We urge the board not to approve the advancement of the program at this time, but to continue exploring.
We have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Cost-effective responsive solutions, bringing in additional key stakeholders. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Farren.
Next, we have Daniel Ferruzan. Daniel, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Ferruzan, are you with us? So we're not hearing you. I'm not sure if you're speaking. Why don't we try? There you go. Okay.
Okay, I'll be quick. First and foremost, just want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us. As attorneys, we do appreciate the State Bar hearing us out. I'm the president of the West Side Bar Association Organization that has over 2,000 members. I'm also the founder of Ferruzan Law, and I have spent quite a bit of time talking to the legal community about the paraprofessional program as a whole. I would generally second Ken Wang's points and those that came before me as well. Sincerely, I do appreciate that you guys are trying to close the justice gap. That shouldn't be lost on anyone. You're doing the right thing, and there certainly needs in that particular direction, and I appreciate your concerns. However, ultimately, I wonder if the way that we're going about this is ultimately going to accomplish the goals you're looking for. As it is now, lawyers are heavily regulated, as we should be, and even under such scrutiny, there's been issues with lawyers. We all know this. There's no way of denying that at this point. And it somehow feels like what we might be doing by creating the paraprofessional program is opening the door on even more questionable practices while simultaneously leaving other options behind on the table, such as Betzettic and other programs out there. There are wonderful legal aid organizations. There are wonderful nonprofit organizations out there. I swear, five minutes ago, we were all saying, why don't we get these guys more funding? And yet, here we are, instead, trying to allow private companies to get involved in these things, allowing the private sector to profiteer. Guys, I appreciate what you're doing. I'm going to yield the rest of my time at the end of the day. Sincerely, I hope we can all figure this out.
Thank you, Mr. Ferruzan.
Next, we have Minyoung Lee. Give me one second. Minyoung, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Minyoung Lee, and I am a senior attorney with Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County, which is a legal aid organization providing free legal services to low-income communities throughout LA County. I would like to provide public comment on matter 701 on the agenda concerning the paraprofessional program and start off by commending and thanking the working group who have expended so much time and energy into this. But as a legal services organization, there are many things about the current proposed program that concern us for the communities that we serve. So in addition to the written public comments already submitted, I want to share a story of a client as a way to highlight why we continue to be opposed to the program in its current form. NLS LA had a client who had just lost her unlawful detainer trial regarding her four-year Tennessee at a rent-stabilized property. She then hired a paralegal who asserted that the State Bar allowed him to handle evictions as a paraprofessional. He promised the client that he would prepare an ex parte motion for a new trial based on newly found evidence and charged the client $2,500 to do this work. This paralegal gave ex parte notice, but then proceeded to negotiate with opposing counsel on the client's behalf without her knowledge or her consent. The paralegal then had the client come to his office to appear remotely for an ex parte hearing, which is when she first learned that he agreed to a settlement that allowed her to have 30 extra days for an additional one month of rent. She never agreed to this, was never even informed of the settlement until she appeared for her hearing in his office. The paralegal advised the client that he regularly deals with attorneys and that this was the best outcome for her. The record was not sealed, and she will continue to have an eviction appear on her credit report. These are the kind of stories that our clients come to us with, and we believe that the current proposed paraprofessional program will lead to more clients who will experience these types of bad acts, which is why we continue to be opposed to the paraprofessional program as it's currently being proposed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Leigh. I suspect it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that I hope that you or someone at your organization has reported the paralegal to the State Bar and other appropriate authorities for follow-up. And we'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Ballot. Your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Members. Mike Ballot, speaking on behalf of the California Defense Council. I'll be very brief. You've heard a steady, consistent message. I think we would align ourselves as an organization with Mr. Fleishman, Ms. Serna, Ms. Farren, and others. You have had good people, thoughtful people, working hard on this, regardless of their perspective. But this is a big issue, and I think it's unfortunate if it gets painted as lawyers versus the public. I think the scholarship behind the degree of the problem, the nature of the problem, you know, is flawed, frankly, and I think it has led to a conclusion which is not supported by the underlying facts. Additionally, when you start creating new license categories, that's a complicated process for the legislature, and I'm not sure that the issues have been sufficiently fleshed out as to cost, scope, and that sort of thing. We just believe the report, although well-intentioned, is not ready to go, is not ready to go to the Supreme Court or the legislature. And you ought to, in my view, take special heed of the comments by legal aid organizations because I'm not at all sure that all options have been considered in terms of delivering expanded services through the good legal aid organizations that exist already. So we would be opposed to forwarding the report for implementation by the Supreme Court or the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballot.
Next, we have Jason Solomon. Jason, your mic has been enabled, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jason Solomon. I'm with the Stanford Center on Legal Profession. We've observed this process from the beginning and have commented throughout. And I just want to say, in opposition to mostly, to most of what's been said today on this paraprofessional proposal, this is a very strong and sound proposal. It's very thoughtful. It's modest. It starts as a pilot in certain counties and in certain practice areas. It requires appropriate levels of training and education for these new paraprofessionals. It's a strong, it's sound, it's well-thought-through, it's incremental. The working group responded to the public comments by making revisions and response, and this is ready to go. It's ready to go forward. Secondly, we have a huge access-to-justice problem. And the answer, some commentators have said, well, we shouldn't try this. We should think about other things. Everything has been thought of. Everything has been tried. We need to try this, and we need to try seven other things as well. The scope of the problem is that large, and the things we've tried over the past few decades haven't worked well or haven't worked well enough. So absolutely, we need to try this, and we need to start now. Not only that, but the practice of people who are not lawyers representing people in certain cases is actually fairly well-established, both here in California, in federal administrative agencies, in other states such as Washington, and abroad in places like Ontario and the UK. I want to point out that on the Paraprofessional Working Group, you've heard from a few of the dissenters on that group. I want to point out that the only dissenters from the Paraprofessional Working Group were people like Mr. Fleishman and Ms. Shining, who were appointed by interest groups. When Mr. Fleishman spoke earlier, he didn't mention that he was the representative of either the California Lawyers Association or California Association of Defense Counsel. I'm not sure which. Ms. Shining is the representative of the Consumer Attorneys. So yes, there are lawyer-interest groups who are worried about competition, and they are opposed to this. But there are people like teachers and nurses and grocery store workers who have to go into court every day facing serious life issues like custody or divorce with no help at all. And the question is, if you can't pay $200 or $300 an hour, do you have to really go it on your own, or can you get some kind of more affordable help? And the answer should be yes. You should be able to get some kind of affordable help, even if you're not wealthy. This is a very well-thought proposal. It needs to go forward, and I encourage you to move it forward right away. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Madam Secretary, it looks like we have no other members of the public requesting to speak. Make a last call here, if you're on the phone or on video. And seeing none, we'll move right into item 701.
Chair Duran?
Yes.
I apologize. I'd like to just note for the record that trustee De La Cruz is here now.
Great, thank you. I will also actually make a final request of the trustees just to make sure that there are no members of the public there present with you in person who may want to address the board. Looks like you're all alone, but you just never knew. Okay, great. If we could elevate Justice Petru as a panelist, and while secretary is doing that, I will introduce item 701. We just heard plenty of public comment about that. We have a presentation from Justice Iona Fred Drew of the First District Court of Appeal, who served as the chair of the working group whose work we have in the staff report and certainly about which we've heard a lot today and in the recent past. So without further ado, Justice Petru, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Ruth. And just a correction. I don't expect you to get it right. My first name is pronounced Ioana for further reference. It's tricky, the Iza Y sound. No, no worries at all. So I actually believe that Leah was going to kick us off here. I believe that she has a PowerPoint presentation that she would like to use as part of this, and I'm going to allow her to go ahead and make her preliminary, not allow, but this is how we decided to do it, that she would go ahead and make her preliminary comments, and then I will make comments. And obviously, anytime anyone wants to jump in and ask questions, I don't want anyone to think that they have to wait until the end here. I certainly envisioned this as an informational presentation, understanding that you all have received the updated information, including the dissents. I think you also received, if I'm correct, the updated justice gap study, bringing up to speed what the data is regarding just how severe the access to justice is in civil matters in the state of California, very, very unfortunately. But with all that, I'm always happy to have a conversation, and so please chime in. And Leah, am I correct that we have a PowerPoint?
We do. I was hoping to start off before Louisa puts it up. You have it, Louisa, correct? Before you put it up, I just wanted to kind of step back and frame the conversation for the board a bit, if you would indulge me. So I'm going to just remind us of why this initiative was launched in the first place, quoting from the board's action when it established the working group. The State Bar's then-recently-published justice gap study found that 55% of Californians, regardless of income, experience at least one civil legal problem in their household each year, and that Californians, again, regardless of income, received no or inadequate legal help for 85% of those problems. A lack of knowledge about what constitutes a legal issue and concerns about costs lead many Californians to deal with problems on their own rather than seek legal help. A thoughtfully designed and appropriately regulated paraprofessional program is an important component of the solution to the access-to-legal-services crisis in California. So that was what motivated the board to establish the working group in the first place. Then, as Justice Petru alluded to, most recently, the Federal Legal Services Corporation has published an updated justice gap study. This is a national report, but its findings are quite startling. So whereas I quoted the 85% of problems go unmet, here in the 2022 report, it's 92% of civil legal problems. Folks are receiving no or inadequate legal help. And for people over the 400% of the federal poverty level, this is income in excess of $100,000 a year, that percentage is 78% unmet legal needs. And based on income specifically, based on cost, between 27 and 55% of the reason that folks cite in that federal study that they are not able to access legal help is cost. So the affordability of legal services is a pervasive problem. It's a problem in our state. It's a problem throughout our country. And it is a problem that impacts not only the very low income but also moderate-income, middle-income people in our state and across the country. We will be updating our own justice gap study, our California-specific study, in 2024. However, I do want to point out to the board that this board and this bar have been studying and issuing reports on the justice gap for at least 40 years, 40 years of study. Is it time to take action? That is a question for you. In establishing the working group, you did so. And that was, I think, a change because the working group was not asked to study whether or not there should be a paraprofessional program. The working group was asked to design a paraprofessional program. And perhaps the ability of the board to take that decisive action, that rather decisive action in light of a 40-year history of studying and issuing reports was in part due to the transition of the State Bar in 2018 into a purely regulatory bar. We are here to serve the public. And so I just want to start out my remarks with that in the background and context, and now we can put up the PowerPoint slide. So you could advance, Louisa, to the first slide. I'm only going to do the first couple of slides, and the last one is here.
I'm sorry. Are you able to see it in slideshow?
No.
Okay, give me one moment. How about now?
Yes, you could advance it.
Okay. Sorry, I have multiple monitors. Okay, there we go.
All right. So just in terms of an overview of the public comment received, there was extensive public comment. I did not do a quantitative analysis of this, but I believe this is the most public comment we have received on a proposal, certainly in my two different stints here at the bar. Over 2,000 comments received by nearly 1,300 commenters. And that comment, because it was quite extensive, we, for the first time, used a really modern platform to categorize and organize the public comment in a Power BI platform. And I hope that all of you have had the chance to play around there because it does make it fairly easy to read a rather extensive set of comments. Of the comments received from individuals, 71% of individual commenters were categorized as attorneys, 23% as non-attorneys. And this is really important. We've been talking as a board in many different venues or in relation to many different things about the need to bring in the public voice and the consumer voice. With respect to this effort, there were multiple efforts to try to get public comment from true members of the public, consumers of legal services or potential consumers of legal services. or potential consumers of legal services. To some extent, you can say we didn't do that well. Less than one quarter of these comments received are from non-attorneys. But in comparison to other public comment efforts where we have captured this information, this is quite a significant increase in the voice of non-attorneys. Attorneys were opposed to the recommendations issued for public comment at a rate of 90%, 90% opposition, while non-attorneys supported the recommendations by 75%. And then you can see there was a category of folks we were unable to classify. You can go forward, Louisa. All right. With respect to organizations, comments were submitted on behalf of 106 organizations, 74% of which indicated opposition to the recommendations. The bulk of that opposition coming from law firms, attorney membership organizations, and legal services programs. In contrast, we point out academic institutions, consumer advocacy organizations indicated support for the recommendations. The working group met twice to consider the public comment received, March 4th and April 20th. You can advance the slide. We're going to go into the changes that they made pursuant to that review of public comment now, and I am going to turn this over to Justice Petru to walk you through those changes.
All right, thank you, Leah. And of course, I mean, none of this is news to you because you have all the information, but we wanted to kind of summarize it on a high level for purposes of review today. So, you know, as Leah indicated, we received a great number of public comments, which I think was a great thing to receive, a lot of comments both from attorneys in various kinds of areas and from a number of members of the public as well. It was very helpful. It really helped us focus. But the first thing we had to do at that juncture was figure out, okay, how are we going to actually go through these? And I just want to take a moment to thank Leah and thank bar staff for doing what I think was an extraordinary job of putting together the comments and doing so in an interactive way such that I went in many times and tried to sort through things and was able to sort through things and get to individual comments and individual areas. I couldn't have done it if I had just had over 2,000 comments dumped in my lap. And so I really do need to take a moment to appreciate the tremendous amount of excellent and hard work that went into that. That being said, and of course, everyone on the working group had access to that information. One of the first things, the first thing we had to do was figure out how to prioritize our review of the then-proposed program in light of the comments. And of course, what we did not surprisingly is decide that we had to consider any new information, any arguments not previously considered, and also focus on things that seem to get a good amount of attention, such as the ownership provisions, the fee sharing provisions, and we decided to include as well the disclosure provisions. And then members of the working group during the meetings, you know, they had the opportunities, of course, to make motions and raise issues, which did occur, and again, you have the detailed information on that. So after review and consideration of the comments in these various categories, we had the opportunity for the first and second meeting. And when I say "we," it's the working group. I didn't vote on anything. So the working group decided to amend its original recommendations as outlined in the next few slides that I'm going to be presenting. So first of all, here, with respect to the collateral criminal practice areas, and this is in the licensing section here on the left side of your slide, the working, and just to be clear and as a reminder, collateral criminal includes things like expungements and reclassification of convictions. And the working group voted to require the prospective licensees to receive specific training on the potential immigration consequences for non-citizen clients. Why did the working group do this? Because there were comments received, which really got our attention and was an excellent reminder, again, the importance of public comment regarding the potential risks to non-citizen clients in this practice area. And there was a discussion that, of course, want to be able to provide assistance to non-citizens who have to deal with these legal issues, but want to do so in the best possible way. And so in order for the paraprofessionals to provide this assistance to the non-citizens for things like expungements and reclassifications, we felt it was very important to include training as to the potential collateral consequences for the immigration consequences. So that is why that modification was made. And then more broadly, on the educational front, which is in the kind of second box from your left in there under licensing, the working group received comments about best practices on individual, excuse me, in educational design. Things like, rather than focusing so much on credit hours, focus on outcomes. We did not have the opportunity to consider a wholesale change to the educational requirements. I continue to think there was some value in credit hours. For example, when you look at the way that law school classes are set up, credit hours are certainly part of it. So I doubt, I personally doubt you're going to completely toss the credit hours idea. I think it's great to look at these additional outcomes. But the point here was really to add recommendations signaling an intention that the final education requirements be informed by best practices in licensing. The working group is not comprised of a group of people who can set up the educational requirements. The point behind it is to really set up the general framework of what kinds of training should be required for each area of specification or specialization. Because again, this program doesn't contemplate that one would get licensed as a paraprofessional and be able to go out and do everything under that program. One would be licensed, for example, as a paraprofessional in family or in collateral criminal, you know, or in UD. And within those, that certain educational requirements be met. And then it's really for the people who are the experts in the area to sit down and figure out exactly what that looks like for a program. So we, as a working group, would want there to be sufficient flexibility to, of course, ensure meaningful public protection while aligning with the best practices. Okay, next one, third from the left, second, no, I'm sorry, I'm still on that last slide. I mean, next little box here, which I'm unhelpfully circling on my own screen, which you can't see, so I don't know why I'm doing that. But with respect to family, children, and custody, there were a couple of clarifications. One was to explicitly exclude conservatorship and guardianship of estate matters, which is what we intended from the get-go, so I'm not quite sure why it wasn't in there, but it's in there now. And the second was to expressly exclude surrogate parentage actions. This was raised as part of the comment process, a very good point that was raised. Surrogate parentage is a very, very complicated area and also does not tend to be the area where we see anywhere near a significant of a justice gap. So between the complexity of the area combined with nowhere near the kind of need that we're talking about otherwise, we decided, we, again, being the working group, I decided nothing, to exclude the surrogate parentage cases. Okay, now, Louisa, the next slide, please. All right. In regards to oversight and regulation, we had a lot of conversation on the first round and had more conversation on this round regarding who should be on the Oversight Committee. There was a recommendation that was embraced by the working group as a whole that they should include an attorney with experience serving low to moderate income Californians. I don't think I need to say really much more about that. I think it's self-evident why that would be useful. And then also that there was already, as part of the proposal, that there be an ongoing legal education requirement regarding bias, except in that bucket of bias that also disability-related bias would be in there. Okay, next slide, please. No surprise to you, as you all know, the biggest bucket, you know, for lack of a better term, that received the most comments had to do with paraprofessional ownership of law firms. I think actually, when I last met with you many moons ago at this point, there was, we had a little bit of conversation or made some comment about how, we anticipated that we were going to get a lot of comments about this. So this was not a surprise. Bottom line, it's been eliminated, such that paraprofessionals cannot own a law firm with attorneys. And, you know, I'm sure that Leah would be glad to have further discussion with you all, if and when you'd like to do that today. But in any event, that, which, from my reading, I think was the most controversial aspect of the initial proposal, did generate a lot of comments and was ultimately removed after further conversation or another vote by the working group. Another topic that got a good amount of discussion in our meetings was the disclosure. We spent a great amount of time on this in the first go-round and spent some more time on this go-round. And in the area of disclosure, which I really want to emphasize, these proposals also would put requirements on the State Bar itself. One would be that the State Bar would generate and make available a standardized initial disclosure form that would address the following. It's on here, the scope of license. And again, what's on here is really not that different from what was there before, but it would be the State Bar has to have a sample form, scope of license, the fact that the client may need to hire a lawyer, the fact that there are other alternative choices available for the client to consider, or potentially free legal services, the paraprofessionals' general fee structure and billing methods, and whether or not there's professional liability insurance. And what is different, so again, these topics within it are not really substantially different from my recollection from what was there before, other than the State Bar would have a sample disclosure form. What would be different, and I think it might be on the next slide, let me take a look.
Yeah, it's on the next slide.
Louisa, can we go to the next one? Okay. Before, the idea was to have the paraprofessionals, you know, certainly inform prospective clients that there may be other low-cost or free legal services available. Now, the idea was to have that be more explicit. But then we had a discussion about how does one go about doing that? You know, we heard from numerous people, including one of our working group members who works in the South Health Center at her county's court, about how it's actually very difficult to maintain an ongoing list of what these alternative providers are with current contact information. And the working group as a whole felt like that was certainly an undue, in some ways unrealistic burden to place upon the individual paraprofessionals. I mean, I'll note that this is not a burden that we place on any attorneys. You know, maybe you should, but that's a topic for another day. But as part of this, the working group has a recommendation that the State Bar develop a non-exhaustive referral list of free legal service providers and modest mean panels available by county and practice area, such that when the paraprofessional is providing the information, the paraprofessional can piggyback off that resource in order to do so, and that there would be that centralized resource. So that's kind of the bulk of the recommendations in that area. And before we move to program funding, you know, I will say, I was extremely impressed and grateful for the time that COPRAC, the State Bar's Committee on Professional Responsibility, and also the Los Angeles County Bar Association, they both took a tremendous amount of time to go through the rules, like in great detail, and to comment very specifically on the rules throughout. A lot of what they had to say was very much encompassed and considered as part of the recommended changes that I just went through. There were other things that were recommended in there that I did not just go through because they were voted on and not accepted by the group. That being said, there are some additional details and information in their lengthy proposals or lengthy comments, I should say. And we wanted to make it very clear that we think that as this program goes forward, that the State Bar should, of course, go back and go through those comments again as part of the process. And I'm going to leave it to Leah when she sees fit to talk about, I think at the end, the process going forward, as part of the process to issue the final set of rules and accompanying comments for public comment. Okay, if we could, please go to the next slide regarding funding. So, well, I believe it was Stephen Fleishman, who during the public comment period today made a mention about technology companies. That was a motion that was brought before the working group. It didn't go forward in that way, but we'll talk in a second about how it did go forward. I just want to share that part of the working group discussion about the technology companies and why the working group didn't just want to do a blanket note of technology companies, that's a very complicated issue, right? There are some technology companies, first of all, how do you define that? But secondly, there are some technology companies that have nonprofit or public benefit arms that are kept separate, at least to some degree. And the concern from the working group was, how are we going to do this? Like, if we can't just list companies, if we list it by sector, how is that actually going to work? Is that going to preclude the ability to potentially get funding that wouldn't be tied to some other interests or overseen by some other interests? And so the more the discussion happened, the more that it really came down to a transparency issue, that the working group felt that there should be no funding for the implementation or maintenance of the program without people knowing where the money came from. And so it's really a commitment to transparency that the working group wanted to emphasize here, rather than saying ahead of time what would be appropriate or not, make it clear where the money comes from, such that everyone knows and that there can be a weighing and a discussion and a feedback loop that happens. Also, there was a very, in regards to funding, a very strong interest on behalf of the working group in not diverting any funds that would otherwise support the State Bar's disciplinary system. I mean, I don't need to tell you what's going on in that whole area and the great public interest in that being adequately supported and funded. And we did not want to pull money from there for any reason. Therefore, the two recommended modifications have to do with transparent, modifications regarding funding have to do, one, with transparency, and two, with the funding not coming from funds that would otherwise be used to support the State Bar's discipline system. Okay, next slide, please. And then the program evaluation. You know, I think that, not I think, I know. Here, the issue is not wanting there to be moving metrics that maybe make the program look worse or better than it would otherwise, right? If any of you have ever been involved with clinical trials or, you know, other kinds of scientific trials, you know, you set your criteria at the front end. You design your program, and you set your criteria at the front end, and then you measure it against that criteria in order to be able to determine the success or failure of your hypothesis or program or whatever it is that you're doing. And for kind of structural integrity and the integrity of the evaluation, the working group wanted the evaluation metrics to be developed and finalized by an independent evaluator in advance of implementation, such that we can have faith, that you can have faith, and that the public can have faith, that the evaluation that happens, which would, of course, be on an ongoing basis. As was mentioned, the idea here is to roll this out as a pilot program, can be data that we actually have faith and trust in. So I think that's it for me, but I know, Leah, you wanted to talk about moving forward.
Yes. Can you advance the slide, please, Louisa? All right. So in terms of next steps, and really what you're being asked to do today, what you're being asked to do today is simply to accept the revised recommendations of the working group and to incorporate those revisions into the program design. So you got the initial program design in September from the working group. So these revisions would be incorporated into that document. And in attachment A, the agenda item that comes from staff as opposed to from the working group, reflects what incorporation of those revisions would be. So it's really accepting. You're not being asked today to advance a proposal onto the next step, okay? But let's just talk about what those next steps would be. The next step is to submit a formal proposal for a paraprofessional program to the Supreme Court. That proposal would be approved by the board prior to being submitted to the court. And so that would happen either at your July meeting or at your September meeting. And I am currently in some conversation with my Supreme Court counterpart about timing and how this might work, and that's why there's a little bit of ambiguity here. But even more sensitively is the question of what exactly would be proposed. You heard some comments alluding to that, certainly in the written comment, you received some concerns about what exactly would be submitted to the Supreme Court. I want to give an example of a couple of issues that I think the board will need to contend with. So as a staff team, we reviewed all of that public comment and came forward to the paraprofessional working group's first meeting with several recommendations, staff recommendations. with several recommendations, staff recommendations. One of those was to eliminate the ownership provision, and you see that reflected in the, in the action of the working group. But there were a couple of others. One had to do with fee caps and whether or not there should be fee caps for paraprofessionals. Another had to do with in-court representation. These are some of the most controversial provisions of the proposal. So one of the questions for, for the board will be, in advancing a program or program proposal to the Supreme Court, do you want to reconsider those issues? The working group declined to do so, even though there was a lot of debate and I think contention on the working group about those topics. Ultimately, they did not revise their recommendations in that area. So when you hear concern or a comment expressed about what kind of changes might be made to the program, I'm giving you two examples of issues that I think are very important policy ones that the board may decide you want to weigh in on and alter the recommendations of the working group before you advance a proposal to the court. So the timeframe again for that is July or September. One of the things that is unclear, certainly in this proposal that you see up here on the screen or this timeline, is whether or not the program proposed to the court would be formally put out by the board for public comment before it is submitted to the court. And I think you can hear from the public comment that that would be the request from those that are weighing in on public comment. So that's a decision you all will have to make. But I do know that sort of task number one is figuring out what the program parameters should be. Then, if the Supreme Court does decide to authorize the program, the next step is to submit it to the legislature for approval. So we've been pretty consistent in messaging that time, th- those steps. But I wanted to lay it out here that we're talking about having a proposed program back to you for either your July meeting or your September meeting. You will have to make a decision as to whether or not you put that out for public comment at that time, receive the public comment, make any further modifications, and then the next step is to submit it to the, to the Supreme Court. So the only last slide is the resolution. I wonder, Chair Duran, would you like us to take it down just for conversation before putting up the resolution?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Justice Petru, Leah, thank you very much both for the concise yet comprehensive report. Let me open it up to the board. Are there any questions of either Justice Petru or Ms. Wilson? Mr. Tony, please.
Thank you, Chair Duran. This is an informational question. One of the earlier memos in describing this proposal as a pilot listed a number of specific geographic regions, counties, what have you, where it was being suggested. Is that something that will be determined later i- in more implementation? Or is what we are considering also the location of the pilot?
Don't need to take that. Okay, so there were public comments received regarding the rollout of the phased implementation. I think we are trying to refer to it as rather than a pilot. But the working group did not make any proposed changes to the counties that were originally identified in their September report. There were some proposals to amend or modify the list. So what we have today is that original set of counties jurisdictions that you're referring to, that those remain the, the counties that are identified for initial rollout. And so, Mark, as part of finalizing the proposal to go to the Supreme Court at this juncture, just speaking off the cuff right now, I would not anticipate that I would be recommending changes because those were selected sort of based on certain metrics. And I don't think those metrics are going to change very much in this intervening period. So it's not an area where I would think there would be changes at this juncture in the process. As it goes forward to the Supreme Court and then to the legislature, there may very well be changes in that, in the complete approach to the initial rollout. But I certainly haven't thought about any at this time.
I- if I could make one quick suggestion, not something that is a issue, but the one thing I see missing when I had looked at those, and we really haven't talked about this issue before, I would suggest a consideration of Humboldt County. And the reason is because that is where you have one of the largest concentrations of Indian Native American populations in the state of California. And in terms of being inclusive of native populations, I, I, I did not see anywhere else on the list that had those concentrations. So it's not an issue for this, but I just wanted that to be under consideration in the future. I, I've got one. I really appreciate all of the revisions being made. And they've addressed almost all of my concerns. But there is one that remains to me, and it's the funding source issue. And I, I have to say, and this is a principle that goes beyond whether it's a company or not a company, or a technology, or a conflict of interest. I understand those concerns have been brought up, but it has to do with the responsibility of the legislature. I have always fought against the principle of unfunded mandates. I do not believe it is proper for the legislature to adopt new programs, create mandates without being willing to fund them, okay? And that's a principle that goes even beyond the state bar. And it, I think it's a general principle. You want the program, you fund the program. So I would very much like to see clarity on the, the, the fact that the legislature, at least for the startup funds, that the expectation is that they will fund it. And if they don't care enough about to fund it, if they're not, if they're not making a funding commitment, they shouldn't be approving it. So I just want to make myself very clear. That is the single change that I would like to see, everything else I can live with.
Thank you, Trustee Tony. Justice Petru, do you want to supplement anything there?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? I will step in with one. I, I think it's wise to use the concept of metrics in advance of the program implementation. And I'm intrigued by the concept of an independent evaluator. I didn't see any discussion in the written materials about who or what that, that evaluator might be. And I was wondering whether there's any conversation at the working group about, are we talking about a retired justice? Are we talking about a practicing lawyer? Any thought on who would fill that role potentially?
I'll let, Leah, just to say that there was not really conversation amongst us as a group, other than the fact that it be someone independent. I, I think there are certainly experts in this field countrywide that you all may want to look at, and it may not be, may not be one person. You know, it may be that you want to have someone very familiar with the California legal system. It may be that you want to have someone who's an expert on, an academic, who's an expert on the implementation of these programs nationwide. I mean, I can off the top of my head think of more than one, but I think what the working group was trying to get across was, as you noted, you know, the metrics being set early on, and then coupling that with the independent evaluator, again, so that we really have a good, solid report back to you and to the public about the usefulness, and certainly the working group hopes that it's a very positive impact. We want to know what it is. Leah?
Yes, I would just add, certainly, I don't think, Ruben, it would be an individual. We're talking about something like a RAND, University of Chicago type of evaluation institution entity. That being said, I think they will have to augment sort of the quantitative evaluation component with subject matter experts, which would be attorneys, but also consumers of services, because those are some of the metrics that have been identified as well. And consumers or observers of services that being in the court side. So there's a lot of different metrics that have already been identified. And I think the evaluation firm will need to make sure that they have not only the quantitative underchops to do a real analysis of impact and outcomes, but also the subject matter expertise that is required.
Great, that makes sense to me. Thank you. Trustees, any questions? Highland, please, Ms. Chen.
So, thank you for that thoughtful presentation, Justice Petru. I have a question about how the working group envisions the Oversight Committee working together or separate from the Regulation and Discipline Committee. You know, as you know, the Regulation and Discipline Committee of the state bar oversees the work of the Office of Chief Trial Counsel and the regulation, the discipline function of the state bar. And so if these paraprofessionals are also subject to a similar discipline function, how, you know, was there any discussion about how the Oversight Committee would be working together with, with RAD or apart from RAD, you know, has there been, has there been any thought given to reporting?
Yeah, so Leah, I'm going to let you take this one. I will just say, I do believe that the initial proposal had a good amount of detail in that, but Leah?
Yeah, this is not, it's, this is intended to be a separate committee appointed by the board and reporting to the board. I would consider it more like a CBE in its structure than a RAD. And we did not have in-depth discussions at all about how it might relate to a RAD, because this is designed to be kind of its own ecosystem, a very different discipline system, because these cases would not go through state bar court, but have a hearing more of the DCA Board Hearing Panel model. So so that there's probably work to do, Highland, to better articulate the relationship to RAD. But it is designed to be pretty independent sub-entity of the bar.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Solak.
Thank you. Bear with me, I'm having some technical issues. I have a question that really is really a drafting question. And so if you want to do policy discussion first and save this, I can defer, whatever you prefer, Ruben.
I saw Trustee Broden's hand go up and then go down. I, I would prefer that if it's a drafting issue, let's wait until we get the resolution up on the screen. And if, Mark, if you're not, if you no longer wish to speak, then we can, we can put it up on the screen. Did you want to?
It was, it was just a, a comment to what was just said, and that is ultimately the board has oversight over this this organization. And, and I have to tell you that I'm, I'm not wholeheartedly yet in favor of this proposal. I do need to see some additional information on where it goes. I certainly, though, would like to see it go to the Supreme Court and see what the Supreme Court has to say about it. But I have those issues with regard to funding and so forth. I, I struggle with whether we should be putting whatever the amount of money and resources into this program versus putting it into the discipline system, which is our ultimate goal. That's something that I, in the last few months, really been struggling with. So ultimately, the board has to, has to have oversight over this, whether it's a separate committee or not. And then I, I wonder about all the other subcommittees that we've had and some of the challenges that we've had and the additional responsibilities that will be placed on the board on that oversight. I just wanted to throw that in while Highland had made that comment.
Thank you, Trustee Broden. I, I will, if I could, just reiterate or amplify what Justice Petru mentioned about the recommendation that, that there be no funds redistributed or, you know, that, that the disciplinary system funding not be affected by the funding needs for this, this program. And I understood that to mean it would not affect our current Office of Chief Trial Counsel and the resource they get.
Right, that's the, that, that's the recommendation, that's the intention. And I think that, not I think, the program ultimately must be self-sustaining, or you will see the result that you saw in Washington that's been alluded to several times. And it's self-sustaining through licensing fees, just the way the attorney regulation system, to the extent it is self-sustaining, it is done through licensing fees. So the question here is really the initial startup cost and how will they be funded? So we're pretty, pretty clear, the working group's recommendation is no funding for that purpose. That could be used to support the discipline system, and that could be the board's directive as well, easily.
Thank you for pointing out that distinction, Leah. Trustee Solak.
I just have a quick sort of refresher type question. And I appreciate the, the, the presentation, and once again, all the work that has gone, gone into this. I'm still, maybe I just have forgotten, the, the pipeline of individuals that potentially could be recruited and trained to do this, to do this. How, what is the process that's going to occur relative to that?
Well, the pipeline of eligible potential licensees is limited because the working group has recommended that only those with a JD and LLM, or who are certified paralegals or LDAs, Legal Document Assistance, would be eligible in the first instance to pursue a license. So you're not talking about just anybody. So if you mean what will be the strategy for outreach, if that's what you're referring to, well, that, that's going to be a multifaceted effort that will include working through law schools to look at their graduates, and certainly their graduates that they know have not passed the bar exam. The population of folks that we know have taken the bar exam multiple times and not passed. And in fact, we use that data to help inform the selection of the counties for the initial rollout. There are paralegal associations in this state. There are also APA-certified paralegal training programs, many of which are in our California community colleges. And we have already started throughout this process to build relationship with the community colleges board. That would be an important avenue for outreach. And then there is, Legal Document Assistance is perhaps the hardest group to contact. There is a statewide association. But there's a belief that there are many, many, many more LDAs out there than are members of the statewide association. So it's a targeted outreach strategy to the different eligible potential licensee populations.
And Leah, just a point of clarification on that. That limited group of potential participants, is that for the, the initial phases only or for the long-term liability of the, the program?
I think that's a question, that is the design that has been put forward by the working group. And I think that's part of balancing the goal of increasing access with a public protection concern. And so the, the requirements for entry in this Californian program, as far as I can tell, are more restrictive than any of the other 20-plus states that are currently in some process of developing a paraprofessional program. And it may be that we find that they are too restrictive and limit the number of prospective licensees, but we'll only know that if we allow this to get started.
Right, exactly what I was thinking. Trustees, any further comments or questions before we put the resolution up and Sean can put his drafting issue on the table? Okay, seeing none, Luisa, if you would, please. Thank you. I'm going to read the resolution, just, I know we have some folks on the phone. So, the following resolution is proposed to the State Bar Board of Trustees, resolve that the board accepts the CPPWG-proposed amendments and clarifications to the program recommendations and rules of professional conduct for licensed paraprofessionals provided to the board in the September 23, 2001 California Paraprofessional Working Group Report, and directs that these amendments and clarifications be incorporated into the final program design. Is there no for the resolution, or is that it? That's it? Okay, Sean, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Luisa, could you put up the document I sent you on the screen, please? All right, thank you. Luisa, could you put up the document I sent you on the screen, please? While you're doing that, I, first I have a question, which is um I found, well, I found part of the proposed changes to Rule 5.4 confusing, and I may be confused about one issue, so I'll raise that in a second. But it, looking at this raised the question in my mind whether, and maybe this is in parts of the proposal that aren't in front of us, because they haven't been amended, but is there a provision for uh two things, one, permission for paraprofessionals to practice in the form of a firm and share fees within the confines of a firm, as I understand it, made up only of paraprofessionals, not including any lawyers? And is there a provision similar to Rule 1.5.1 that allows lawyers who are not in the same firm to share fees with client consent?
Well, I know that the answer to the first question is yes. On 1.5.1, I'm hoping that we have uh Randy, who I don't see. I'm gonna have to uh get back, get back to you hopefully during this meeting on that one, Sean. Because it was a lot of back and forth on 1.5.1.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so, all right, so now turning to the, the document on the screen. So the D uh so um, this is the proposed rule that we're asked to recommend today. So I took out all the redlining. If you want to look at your materials, if the, if this is at page seven of the memo. Um, so these are changes to the proposed changes. The D1 I found to be really confusing. And if I'm, if I read it without understanding the background, I don't think I would really directly understand what, what is intended. But it seems to me the intention of this is to say that a licensed paraprofessional can only practice in a firm in which no one other than another licensed paraprofessional owns an interest. So that excludes lawyers, and it excludes non-lawyers who are not licensed paraprofessionals. Is that the intention of D1, or am I getting that wrong?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Sean, I was reaching out to, to somebody in your one.
The question that, the question that Sean posed was whether this is meant to exclude a paraprofessional from sharing ownership interest with anyone who's not a paraprofessional, not just lawyers, which I don't know that that was something, and you can help clarify my recollection. I don't think we discussed it in the working group in the context of a paraprofessional and anyone else. We were discussing paraprofessionals and lawyers. Um, that, but that's, that's just off the top of my head.
That's correct. That's what we discussed. I, who, like, who else, Sean, would a paraprofessional own a firm with?
Well, the way this is, let me see, hold on a second. Let me look at the original again. Yes, so as I read D1 as it's proposed to us, it doesn't preclude paraprofessional practicing in a firm in which a non-lawyer owns an interest. That's one issue. The other is, is that it's very confusing. So I, I thought, if, the, I thought the intention is to say um a licensed paraprofessional can't own an interest in a law firm, in other words, right?
Right.
So I think that means they can only form a partnership or a firm with other licensed paraprofessionals.
Yes. What I'm gonna say, Sean, is that this issue was uh exhaustively addressed by um several folks, including our State Bar Rules people, Supreme Court liaisons, and members of the working group. And what you're being asked to do today is to accept the revisions that have been drafted by the working group. This is not your commitment to, this is the proposal that we are going to submit to the Supreme Court. So I, I would feel uncomfortable wordsmithing this, because what you're, what you're changing, or I don't know if it's beyond wordsmithing, editing it, because what you're being asked to do is accept the recommendation from the working group. You couldn't decide you don't want to accept their recommended revisions to 5.4. But I don't think we should try tinkering with their recommended revisions, because it it went through a lot of process to get to where it is.
Well, I understand. I, I mean, I can accept that. Uh, I initially just flagged this because I thought it was confusing, but now I think, I think if this were adopted, it would allow, like I said, licensed paraprofessionals to form a partnership with non-lawyers, which I'm sure is not intended, unless that prohibition is somewhere else in these rules.
Isn't it in D2?
Yeah.
Isn't it in D2? Right, because D2 is, is where it provided that you can't have an individual who's not a lawyer or a paraprofessional having any interest.
Okay, good, thank you. So, but my second substantive, it's kind of drafting slash substantive, is in the rest of these subdivisions, 2, 3, and 4, I thought including lawyer didn't make sense, because lawyers and paraprofessionals can't own a firm together. So that also was confusing. But maybe I'm missing something.
And we don't, so Leah, we don't have um Randy available?
No, I just pinged him.
So let me, let me ask you this, Leah. I, I, I understand the concern about trying to draft here on the fly and um
Well, and I'm just gonna try.
For considering this. I mean, is the working group completely done, or could we delegate? I mean, I'm just a little concerned about these rules having unintended consequences.
But, but Sean, what I, what I'm saying is these rules are not um, nothing is happening with the rules right now. So I think what we can do is just note your concern, make sure we address it when we go to the next step of finalizing rules. Because just to step back, the, the program design has to ultimately be approved by the court and this um, the legislature, and then rules that conform to what has ultimately been authorized need to be finalized. We, we may need wholesale revisions to the rules based on what ultimately gets authorized, and those rules will then have to go out for public comment. So it is at that phase that we will be thinking about a final set of rules. Uh, we're not anywhere near there right now.
Okay, that's, that's totally fine. So as long as it just goes into the hopper for consideration, uh, then I'm good. Thank you.
Trustee Broden, do you have a comment on this?
Just quickly, as somebody who has a JD but has not been licensed by the State Bar as an attorney, are they a lawyer under this rule?
No, if you, if you're not licensed as a lawyer.
You can't, you can't hold yourself out as a lawyer.
No. I see Brady, Luisa, that Brady has his hand up in the attendees. I don't know if he is gonna answer some of these rule questions.
And if we could uh take the, take the red light off of the screen so that, at least I can see um all of the attendees and the panelists. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, we do have a, a raised hand, uh, Mr. Dewar from the Office of General Counsel. We're gonna promote you as a panelist. Or the hand went down. There you are. Hi Brady, you're on mute. You're on mute.
You're muted, Brady.
I, I wanted to jump in real quickly to address Sean's question. I think that, um, because the, the changes here were to D, that, that's what's been put up. But um in the item, you'll see the full text of the Rule 5.4, which tracks the attorney role. And right in Rule 5.4A, it makes clear that a licensed paraprofessional shall not share legal fees um with a person who's not a lawyer or a licensed paraprofessional. So, so no, you can't share it with, with anybody. So it's, it's, it, it tracks lawyer rule.
And I think that we should remember the point that Leah made, which is essentially, we're taking the working group's recommendations and, and deciding whether or not to move into the next step with them. Um, remembering, of course, that the issue that Sean raised does need to be examined at that next step, I think, or subsequently, quite frankly. Thank you, Brady, for, for your contribution. Any other questions or comments on the resolution itself? Trustee Tony.
Thank you, uh Chair Durand. Um, I very much liked the revision that the working group did to clarify that startup funds should um are, should not be coming from, or prohibited coming from money that, don't divert money from the discipline system, okay? And I got that, I support that. My concern remains that there, there should be no question of external money for this startup, period. No private funds are appropriate, and certainly not stakeholder private funds that have self-interest. That's, that, that constitutes a conflict of interest. And the way to avoid that is to make it clear that the expectation is that the startup costs need to be funded by the legislature. Um, I, I think that's the way out of it. I think it is appropriate to do, it's a very sound principle, that the legislature should appropriate its mandates, period. Anytime they mandates a, a new program to get started, that, that's just a basic principle. And I think it's a fair principle. And I, I think when you talk to most legislators, they will say, yes, that's a good principle. We hope we have the money. But it's a good principle. We agree with the principle. And I, I would like to see this resolution very clearly um state that principle, so that there's no confusion about going and asking for money from tech firms. That is a major, major mistake.
Speaking on behalf of the working group, uh, I, I, it was beyond our scope, it was not in our purview to make that policy determination about making a statement that it must be publicly funded. I mean, I, I will say, Mr. Tony, I'm sure there are a number of people on the working group who would agree with what you just said. But we felt that our appropriate role as a working group was to take the position that however you all decide that this should be funded, however it gets funded, should be transparent.
I appreciate that, uh, Justice Petru. I, I'm just suggesting that of what I want to see uh modification to this uh um uh proposal uh for my support. I, I want to support this. And I think what I'm asking for is, doesn't undermine or weaken the proposal, but yeah, you know, makes it stronger by um establishing a very clear principle.
I would, um, just, you know, that, that's the Board's policy call to make. I, I think requiring uh legislative funding is perhaps overly um restrictive, uh in my view, when we're looking for startup money. Um, we have, as an organization, been the benefit of funding from philanthropy over the years to do very good things here at the bar, including some of our early work um to support records expansion activities. Um, philanthropy funds, a, a lot of work in the legal services space. And so I, I would not want to see us be precluded um from pursuing those avenues. Uh, so that, you know, the, again, it's Board's policy call, but that would be my caution.
I'd like to jump in here with an observation as well. Um, the, the concept of a conflict of interest is a very specific legal question um and can sometimes vary depending on the laws that you're working under, right? Uh, State Bar Rules versus the Political Reform Act, for example. So um, I am a little hesitant to inject that qualifier into the process at this stage, although I don't, I don't disagree with trustee Tony that it's an issue that might, you know, that might merit some, uh, some some consideration um as we move, if we move forward. Um, I just don't know that, similar to what trustee Selig has raised, whether it's absolutely necessary to do so at this point, given um that we are looking at the working group's recommendations sort of as a package as a whole, and deciding whether or not to move forward with it um as they've asked us to do, understanding that both the court, the Board, and ultimately legislature will have opportunities to uh to further massage and, and work on this program. Those are my, my initial thoughts, and I, I hesitate to get so involved in the debate, sitting as the chair, but um as a lawyer who works with conflicts of interest every day, uh advising clients, I just want to make that point.
It, it, my only response is that conflict of interest has two components. One is a legal component. The other is a perceived conflict of interest. I think we have to be considerate of both.
I accept that, sure. Trustees, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask that the resolution be put back up on the screen, and uh if there's a motion, one way or the other, I'd love to hear it.
Sean, I'll move the item.
Motion by trustee Selig, is there a second?
This is Sonia. I second.
Second by trustee Dylan. Any further debate? Mr. Tony.
Yes, I uh would like to move an amendment to this resolution to add the um uh to, to basically say um with the expectation that the startup cost would be funded by the legislature.
Uh, Mr. Selig, as the original motion maker, you have the option to accept it as a friendly amendment. If not, we'll debate it and uh see if Mr. Tony gets a second.
I decline to accept. Look forward to the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on Mr. Tony's amended motion? Hearing none, uh, we'll go back to the original motion on the table. Madam Secretary, may I have a vote, please?
Broden?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Nay.
Nine ayes, one nay. The motion carries.
Thank you, trustees. Uh, Justice Petru and the entire working group, thank you all so very much for uh quite, quite an amount of work and, and dedication to public service. We'll see where this goes from here.
And on my behalf, and on behalf of the uh working group as a whole, thank you from all of us for giving us the opportunity to work on this. Um, we have very much, it hasn't been easy, but we've all appreciated and enjoyed it, and hope that we have been of some assistance. So thanks to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
We couldn't have done it without such a strong chair, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, Leah. Well, the chair is not gonna go get some lunch, which I hope you all get to do as well at some point. Thanks, everybody.
Now you've made me hungry, Justice.
Bye.
Alrighty, uh, that takes us to item 710. Does the Board want to go straight to this, or would you, would you need a five or 10-minute break?
How about a lunch break?
About a little. Yes.
Lunch, lunch break? Okay, let's, let's break for uh 33 minutes, bringing us back at 1:30. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you soon. I'll reconvene.
Meeting is not being recorded.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, I'll reconvene the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Thank you, everyone, for um allowing us a brief lunch break. We're gonna continue with our agenda, and next up is item 710, which is the SB 211 Case Processing Standards Update. This is a presentation only, and um Ms. Sheng is presenting, I think, or is scheduled to present, at least maybe we need to promote her to a panelist.
She has been promoted.
Good afternoon and welcome back, Ms. Sheng.
Good afternoon.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, let me share my screen first. Can you see my screen?
We can.
Okay, so today, George, Lisa, and I will present our uh progress in developing the new case processing standards. Uh, the update uh today is based on the March meeting uh we presented to Brad, Regulation and Discipline. we presented to Brad, Regulation and Discipline Committee. When I say we, I was not there. But Lisa and Ron, in my division, co-presented with George about the work developed in March. And this is the update based on the work then. A quick overview of what needs to be done and what has been done. The four factors that are required to be taken into account in our new case processing standards by SB 211. Some of you are very familiar with those four factors. Mechanics of the discipline process. We used the three case processing stages. Intake, investigation, charging as an indicator of the mechanics of the discipline process. Complexity of cases. We have complex and the non-complex cases in our system. Risk to public protection. In March, we talked about using a priority level, P1, P2, P3. Now we are in the process of reevaluating this indicator. I will share more in the later slides. The last factor, reasonable expectation of the public. In March, we talked about, we conducted a survey. In this presentation, we will share the results of the survey. In addition to the four factors, SB 211 also requires us to the standards to reflect the four areas. First one, state and national experts' opinion. We have met with the three experts. We identified and shared in our March presentation. They reviewed our data and the conceptual framework of our new case processing standards. They will issue a report on our final proposal. And the next section will focus on the three areas. Report from the Legislative Analyst Office. Reports from the State Auditor. And review of case processing standards in other states. So before I go to the details of the updates, I want to share a little bit of my thought process here. In addition to presenting what our updated standards are, I also want, in this presentation, share with you why we made those updates and why we're in the process of making further adjustments. The purpose is to build a strong and obvious link between the requirements by the legislators and the work we do and the standards we propose. So by reviewing 2019 Legislative Analyst Office Report, those are our key takeaways. I'm not going to read every line. You have the document. I hope the font size is readable. I just want to say, all those key takeaways identified by us either have been incorporated into our case processing standards or are in the process of being incorporated in the standards. I do want to highlight the last bullet point here. The 2019 LAO report recognized the need for developing benchmarks for further improvements to address backlog of discipline cases. This recommendation of developing benchmarks was also mentioned in 2019 State Auditor Report, then this report, then 2021 report. So one thing, one adjustment we are considering making is to add the benchmark metrics in our final case processing standards. So that's one adjustment we are considering. So let me go to the details of 2021 State Auditor Report. I remember in one of the previous Rad meetings, one of you, one of the board members, I, sorry, I don't remember exactly who, raised a question if our previously proposed standards were not embraced by the State Auditor. How can we make sure this time's standards will be well received? So I just want to highlight 2021 State Auditor Report. It's where the State Auditor responded, provided their responses to our previously proposed standards. So I want, you know, draw your special attention to this report. They talked a lot about benchmarks. As I said, we are incorporating, we are considering incorporating benchmarks into our final standards. They put a lot of emphasis on backlog measure. We are developing our backlog measure right now. They talked about their preference for a single backlog figure, but they also mentioned they recognize different timeframes for different types of cases. Then they talked about staffing need analysis. We will not have the time to complete a workload study before October 31st, but we will add our plan for staffing need analysis in our final proposed standards. Then they also raised a question about our priority level. Any questions so far? Am I going too fast? Okay, all right. So 2022 State Auditor Report, the most relevant two takeaways identified by me and George are their emphasis on lengthy patterns of complaints. And they went to the details of, you know, patterns of complaints based on complaint type. So we are in the process of incorporating this factor into our case processing standards. So some detailed updates we have made. First is adjusting the priority level categorized cases as high risk and the low risk as the major indicator of the factor, risk to public protection. We think the term is easier for the legislators and the public to understand. And we are in the process of incorporating some of the bullet points we shared previously into this high risk and the low risk differentiation. Then another key update we are considering making, as I shared, we are considering including benchmarks into our framework of the case processing standards. I want to point out, right now, we already developed a weekly operational report. However, I do, my observation is that the weekly operational report is not tightly linked with the case processing standards framework. So there is some, you know, gap there. That the interim benchmark will serve as an interim checking point that we can know either monthly or quarterly how we perform in terms of reaching our performance goals. Then the next major area that SB 211 requires us to consider is other states' case processing standards. I will give you a minute to quickly read this table. So our major observation is that first, they use the case processing stages as the main types of case processing standards, timeframes, which is consistent with our current time. Current conceptual work is that we have three case processing stages. Intake, investigation, and the charging. Another major observation is that they all use the average time as the basis of developing their timeframes. So we are adjusting, we are exploring basing case processing standards on average time rather than media, as we shared in March presentation. However, we are still going to report media and averaging our annual discipline report per SB 211. So that's some adjustment we are considering making. Another thing is, if you look at the table, some key statistics are missing, which are number of staff members involved in the disciplinary system, number of complaints received, number of pending investigations at the end of the fiscal year. So we will add those key statistics into the table. And so that when we develop, when we develop our final timeframe, we can really do the apple-to-apple comparisons of benchmarks. So the last information source is public survey results. So in March presentation, we talked about, we conducted a survey. We distributed the survey to both public and OCTC staff. In this survey, we have three factual scenarios. We asked the respondents to rate the complexity level and the estimated case processing time. And not surprised, there is a constant gap, no matter which, you know, complexity level we look at, between the OCTC staff's time estimation in months, in the unit of months, and the general public's estimation of time. However, they all, both groups recognize that, you know, the more complex the case is, the more time it requires. So the next step for this is that we are conducting several focus groups based on case types and trying to understand the more details about the specific time in case process, in the case processing framework. All right, before I hand the presentation to Lisa, any questions so far? All right, Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, can you go to the next slide? Hello, everyone. So here's the overall path forward in how we're going to develop the standards. As you can see, there is five key steps. But let's, so I'm going to walk you through them. So the starting point is to generate as-is standards. And that is, like, right now, if you look at all our different categories, how long does it take to close cases? Next, we conducted an analysis where we adjust those time standards to explain for, to adjust for unexplained time gaps. And we're going to explain what that methodology is in a few slides later. Once we have that set of standards, again, one for each of our categories, that's when we consider what we learned from our other six states. We hear our experts' thoughts on what the time standards are shaping up to look like. We consider all the information we received from the LEO and auditor reports and, of course, our public survey results. And then we adjust again. That's step two. Next, then, we will share those standards that we generate with OCTC staff and will conduct focus groups. And in particular, we'll ask them questions like, under normal circumstances, what accounts for the amount of time it takes to process different cases? These different types of categories are we're considering? These gaps that we've identified, what do you think explains them, et cetera? And then we will, based on that, those conversations, we will produce a final set of 2B, what we call 2B standards. These are the standards that we propose that we be held accountable for. And that's step four. And once we have that, then we'll generate staffing requirements. As you said, that we're going to shift that project into later, next year. So, so far, we have completed, we've started, we've completed step one and step two. And that's where we're going to share today. Next slide. So just as a reminder, at your last meeting, we shared our previous typology. We had eight categories of cases that we were going to develop standards for. This was the slide we shared last time. So just sharing with you as a reminder of this is what we shared last time. And we're going to show what we've changed it to. Go ahead to the next slide. So as you said, we've updated that framework, again, that typology that we shared. And now we're considering just really four categories. Again, nothing's changed with regards to the stage. Of course, complexity is still there. And instead, we're using, on the right here, you see risk to public protection. We're just having a category of high risk versus low risk. Before, we were looking at P1, P2, P3 cases. So now it's just high risk or low risk, high risk or the P1 cases. And we're going to expand that a bit to consider previous patterns of complaints. And then down here on the left, it's just case expedition. This is kind of like a new category, and that's just P2 cases, which will have their own set of standards. Okay, next slide. And so now, remember those eight categories. On the previous slide, we've consolidated them into six categories. So now the categories are right here. There's categories, these are cases that close an intake. Expedited cases that close an investigation. High-risk cases that are non-complex that close an investigation. Number four is high-risk cases that are complex, close an investigation. Five are low-risk cases that close an investigation. And six are all cases that make it to the charging phase and close there. Okay, so thank you. Now, I think George is presenting from here on forward.
Yes, so basically tying these back to the eight categories we had before. Intake is still intake. The expedited was what was P2. And the P1s, which are the high-risk ones, remain differentiated by complexity. We've combined all of the P3 cases into one category, the low-risk investigation. So they're no longer differentiated on complexity. And we've combined the charging. So that now includes both P1 and P3 cases. And that's the approach we're going to take, both to simplify and because it appears consistent with kind of the data we've looked at in some of the standards in other states and other places. So you can see some facts about each of those categories here. And importantly, on the left, you'll see Dwayne mentioned average and median, which we plan to report both. You'll note that in this, the median times, which is what was, we showed last time in March, you can see that the averages in each of those is higher. That's in fact, because what's driving the averages higher is most likely a set of small number of cases at the tail end of the distribution that are taking longer times and are driving the averages up as compared to the medians. So that's kind of where we are. Let's go to the next slide. So what we did to kind of arrive at, if we think about the two sets of standards we're proposing, the as-is standards is basically what we could do now with our current resources. In other words, it's based on historical data with some procedural adjustments to kind of make procedural tweaks, but without the addition of significant resources. When we look at the 2B standards, what we're trying to look at is, if we had, so I'll take an ideal world, let's say we had all the staffing we wanted. Cases would still take some period of time. And so we would come up with a set of times that a case would take if we had all the staffing we needed or all the staffing ideally we wanted. That's what we're trying to come up with, the 2B standards. In other words, assuming that we got some increase in resources that was reasonable, what would that do? And what would be a set of case processing times that we could mesh if those times weren't significantly slowed down by investigators and attorneys having excessive caseloads? And so to look at that, what we look at was, we looked at our cases and we found, diving kind of into the cases, that a number of our cases had unexplained gaps. In other words, when we look at our case process, our case management system, we would see gaps between events that were unexplained. In other words, it wasn't time waiting for things. It was just that there were times when the cases appeared to lie fallow and nothing was being done. And so the hypothesis is that that is the result of attorneys and investigators basically having diverted their attention from that case to other cases and not being able to get back and do the things that would be necessary on that case because of these things here, their caseloads, not enough time, forced to allocate their time among a larger number of cases than they should with the result that they're sitting for some period of time. So to try and work that into our analysis, we looked at numbers of cases. Can we go to the next slide? We looked at adjusting our case age by removing any unexplained times that exceeded 60 days. In other words, anything that sat fallow for longer than 60 days, we're going to remove the time over 65 days. And this, over 60 days. And this is an example of how we went about doing that. So the theory is that this would give us an adjusted time for each case that would be the time, that would be an ideal time if in fact, it wasn't laying fallow as a result of investigators or attorneys having excessive caseloads. So using that, we came up with, if we can go to the next slide, this table, which is basically our work conducted to date. So the as-is standards here, the starting point is basically the as-is standards, which is essentially what we showed you in March, but converted now from a median to an average. So now we're looking at the as-is standards in terms of average as opposed to median. Then we adjusted the Then we adjusted those times by removing all of the gaps that were above 60 days to come up with these adjusted averages. And then we took a first cut at kind of looking at some of the other data we have, the public survey results, some information about the other states that was displayed to you before, which also report as averages, the California Healing Arts Boards, which also report as averages, and some information that we had from the 2016 backlog study, and adjusted it to say, okay, if we look at the 60-day gap adjusted data and we factor in all these other things, these appear to be tentative 2B standards that would be consistent with all of that information. And you can see that these are averages. So what we are tentatively thinking of is basically 30 days for intake, 90 days for expedited investigations, our P2 cases, 120 days for our high-risk, non-complex investigations, 180-day average for our high-risk, complex investigations, 210 for low risk. And then looking at charging, because feeding into charging will be all of these other cases. So things that have gotten through investigation, which in what may be very different cases of time, looking at charging as just on average, that should take 90 days from whenever the case gets into charging. So this is kind of tentatively what we're looking at. The plan is to take this out, have this reviewed by people in OCTC who work these types of cases to get in accordance with what the legislative analyst and state auditor have both recommended in the past, a Delphi analysis based on focus groups to get the people who actually work these cases to look at how the cases are worked and ratify the reasonableness of these standards. Then do a final adjustment and come back with what we hope will be our final proposed 2B standards. So I think with that, we're going to go to the next slide, which I think Yuen is going to take.
Okay, I just want to quickly share our project timeline. So today, May 20, our update here, then we will need to write our final proposal and submit proposal to RAD in July. In the meantime, solicit public comment. Submit between July and September, submit our proposal to Legislative Analyst Office for feedback. There's September, where we'll make some revisions and revised proposal will be submitted to RAD. We all know October 31st is the final deadline for the proposed, for the case processing standards. We do want to add the kind of workflow study. That plan, that analysis plan will be part of the final case processing standards. And we will mention that we will conduct a workload study in 2023 spring. And we will have the final report hopefully in June 2023. And submit our proposal staffing requirement. That's it. Thank you.
Rupert, if I could just say a couple things. One, I want to, I hope that the board takes away from this. One, it's been a tremendous amount of work that's going into this. But two, there really is, with a great deal of intentionality, a focus on all of the feedback we previously received from the legislative analysts, from the auditor, paying close attention to the requirements of SB 211. And the goal here, of course, is to develop case processing standards that are accepted, not rejected, by the legislature. So I want to make that really clear. That's what we're doing. And I want to really recognize and appreciate Yuen. This is her third week on the job. And I think having somebody from the outside come in and look at all of these reports has been quite helpful to all of us. So one is, you know, we're just making a lot of effort to be responsive to the feedback we've received. The other is, I wanted to pick up on that last slide. We are proposing to do a workload study next year. That means that the case processing standards will not be submitted with a request for funding for new positions to implement the standards. It means the request for funding would trail because the funding request would be, the product or the workload study would be used to generate that need. And that's something George and I have talked about quite a bit and feel confident that it's the right approach, is to bifurcate development of the standards and then articulation of the resources needed to implement them. But I want to make sure that I'm making that explicitly clear to the board, because that's not how we've done this previously.
Thank you, Leah, and thank you, George, Lisa, and Yuen for the presentation. There any questions by any members of the board on what we've received? Questions or comments? It's just so well.
First of all, I just want to thank folks for sort of the comprehensiveness of the presentation. And I think the responsiveness to what it is that we need to respond to relative to the audit reports, the LEO reports, and sort of the path that we're sort of carving going forward. Leah, if you would just sort of talk just a little bit more, I wanted just to make sure I really was clear on what you just said on how the resource piece may lag here. And wondering what that sort of lag time might be.
Okay, so what the practical effect of what we're proposing would be is that the caseload standard, or the, yeah, the caseload standard, case processing standards would be submitted to the legislature in the fall of 2022, perhaps to be codified in the 2023 fee bill. But if we complete the workload study in, you know, spring, summer of 2023, the earliest we could hope to see any revenue or licensing fee adjustment to support the workload study results would be 2024. So you're talking about a one-year lag. And I'll be happy to turn this over to George as well. But I think there, we want to be really confident when we ask for more resources to implement these standards. We want to be confident that if we get them, we're actually able to implement the standards. And I think George feels that there's some work to do in his office to get there. And I think that's, I just think it's the right approach. But it is different than what we've done in the past. And George, I don't know if you want to elaborate at all.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I mean, we've been working with people in Yuen's office to try and identify how we're going to arrive at a staffing level once we have the standards. In other words, what we'll need to do is define the number of staff that would be needed to reach that level. That's harder than it sounds, looking at the data and trying to figure out. In the past, we've been criticized by both the Legislative Analyst Office and the State Auditor for not having done a thorough enough work to demonstrate the connection between increased staff and the ability to move cases more quickly. And so I just, I don't see a possibility of having that done in time to have it submitted by October, given that we don't have the standards that we're trying to move to. And that was part of the criticism in the past, that we were doing workload studies based on standards that weren't yet in place or old standards such that the workload study didn't relate to what we were setting as our goals. So I think we need to clearly have in place what our goals are and then do the workload study and have the documentation to support whatever we put in so that we're not in the same position that we've been criticized for in the past.
So I appreciate both your comments. And I think the only thing that, as I'm thinking about this, and I understand the chronology and how this is going to unfold, is the revenue stream that the sale of the building presents and which would be a revenue stream that would be sooner than what it is that we're, well, potentially sooner than what it is that we're talking about and how that might factor into this. And I don't necessarily know if I am looking for a response, but just simply the fact that, just sort of airing the fact that there potentially could be a revenue stream that could avail itself sooner. But we may not be in a position to actually attach ourselves to that revenue stream.
Well, I think certainly discussions about what we will be allowed to do with the proceeds from the sale of the building, as you know, that we're hoping that those are underway soon. And this could be an option on the table.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Selig?
Could whoever is controlling the PowerPoint put back up that slide toward the end that had the proposed timeframes on it?
I think it's the one before this.
Thank you. So, okay, George, I have, this is a dumb question because I'm sure you've said this already. These, so we're proposing, so column two is what we're proposing to be the statutory standard. And is that something, is that based on what we can achieve with today's resources? Or is that?
No, that would be something that we could achieve with increased staffing. In other words, the way to look at this, I think, is the ASIS standards is what we think we could achieve with our current resources. The column two is what we think we could achieve with increased staffing levels that would be sufficient to basically eliminate the time lags that result from investigators and attorneys having excessive caseloads coupled with procedural improvements in how we handle cases.
Okay, thank you. And then, so in column two, well, I'll tell you, the thought went through my mind whether four and five are too long. But so much thought has gone into this. I'm not questioning it. I just, you know, you've got six months and then, I can't do my math, 210 must be like seven or eight months. But the thing that really caught my eye is item six, charging, that would take 90 days? Why would that take 90 days? I mean, isn't that at the point where you're simply drafting an NDC? And I know you're probably including time for the ENEC.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm missing something. What am I missing?
So, yeah, that time includes drafting the NDC, drafting a charging memo, conducting the ENEC and engaging in any further process. And if there is a resolution, it would also include preparing, negotiating, and drafting a stipulation to resolve the case.
I guess, I honestly, the answer to that is it seems too long. And I don't know that it's going to play well. So that's just my, it seems like a long time to do that.
And that's one of the reasons that I want to emphasize that that column is tentative. We are still, for example, as Yuen mentioned, we're still waiting to get more data from some of the states. And similarly, we're trying to look at some more of the data for California's own boards and differentiate that data. The problem is that many of these boards and states don't report data that's differentiated the same ways that we're proposing. So we're trying to sort out how to address that and get a more realistic look at what has to be done.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Tony?
Thank you, Chair Duran. I really like this revised categorization of the cases. I think there's a lot of rationality to it. And I like having the different days associated with different steps of the process. I think that's very useful. This is just a comment and suggestion for when you're looking at the staffing, survey, need assessment. This process works best, a new process, with new cases as they come in, right? New cases that are day zero, because they just came in. And I can see you being able to come up with a, you know, for, you know, new cases under the new set of rules, what's the staffing need? I think there will need to be additional staffing needs for the backlog of everything that's come in before that time. And just want you to keep in mind that your initial request may need, because it needs to clear up a backlog, may need to be more than your routine staffing needs that, whose goal is to prevent a backlog from occurring in the first place. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Trustees, any other questions or comments? Okay, everyone, thank you for the comprehensive presentation. We look forward to seeing how this further develops. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it takes us to the end of our open session business. I'm not mistaken. I don't see anybody trying to tell me otherwise. We will move into closed session under the authority of the following government code sections. 1126 sub E, sub 1, 1126 sub A, 11126 sub A, so 1, and 11126 sub C, sub 7. We have no public comment for closed session. And you all should have or will receive shortly a link for our closed session. We will come out at the end of closed session to report whether or not there is any reportable action. Thank you, everyone. See you in closed session.
Okay, we are now recording.
Great, thank you. I will restate what I said. We are waiting for trustees to bounce back into the open session meeting after having completed the closed session agenda as posted on our website. The board considered each of the items that are listed on that closed session agenda, but made no reportable action. And so with that, I will adjourn the Board of Trustees meeting and hand the gavel, as it were, over to Vice Chair Stallings to make an announcement about the next meeting to be convened.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to reconvene the General Counsel Search Committee. It was adjourned from earlier today. So I will make a renewed call for public comment. And Luisa, do you see anybody who is attending that House Raise Their Hands?
I do not see any members of the public with their, wanting to make public comment.
All right. And so at this point, we'll go back into closed session from the recon, or from the adjourned meeting pursuant to government code section 11126 sub A, sub 1. And so members of the search committee access the closed session agenda using the link that Luisa sent for the regular Board of Trustees closed session.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you, sir.